Called an order. City of Lawrence Common Council. Sorry, guys. Put the speaker on here. Okay, I'm sorry again. City of Lawrence Common Council. The date is March 6, 2023. The time is 6:35. It's called the order to the meeting. Well, we'll start with a pledge allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you today asking for your wisdom, asking for your guidance. We are thankful for all the many blessings and all the privileges and all the things that you have put upon us. We ask that you continue to keep our city safe. We ask that you keep the public safety workers and the city folks who work for us, keep them safe and keep our city moving in the right direction. And we just thank you for your discernment and wisdom. And we ask all these things in your most high name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We have a determination of, we have a quorum. We have one counselor who is on the teams, Mr. Counselor Wells. And so we will have to do all of our votes and motions and things by roll call, by roll call vote with him being on, on deal. Okay? Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes and regular meetings on February 6, 2023. I'm not going it today.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We need to get a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on the minutes. Any discussion? CNN, can I, a roll call vote? Counselor Russell. Counselor Rusomorov.
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Counselor Freeman.
Yes.
Counselor Giles, yes. Counselor Chavis.
Yes.
Counselor Denny.
Yes.
Counselor Wells.
Yes.
Okay. You have to be on video, sir, to vote. Could you turn your camera on, please?
I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Counselor Shevlock.
Yes.
All right. We have reports of committee, code committee, please.
Mr.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Roll call on the vouchers. I'm sorry. Sorry, pause. Sorry. Moving on, I don't know how to fast there. Can we get a motion for approval of the vouchers?
Mr. Chair, I could make a motion to approve the vouchers. There are two that I have questions with, so I would like to say, make the motion to approve the vouchers with the exception of Kroger, Gardas, and Regus for $38,664.80 and Tyler Technologies, which is listed as professional services, for $74,059.47. And I would like to put back into the vouchers the claim for Howard Companies that was submitted February 6.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Second. So we have a, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to make a quick discussion regarding, or a quick point regarding Howard Companies. Sheree did send the, some information about that. And we went through and looked and all, the intersections he referring to is in the Chesapeake subdivision. And as we went through there, it's obvious there was some construction going on in that area. And I think a question did arise as to actually the selection process on, on how the funds were utilized. This is a fairly newer neighborhood, especially if you compare it to Old Oaklandon, you know, and some other areas of the city. So that has nothing to do with Howard Companies, and we could address that at another time. But the work was obviously being done.
I agree. I do know that we use a scoring process. We use engineering firms that will work with the administration and DPW to score streets to make a choice on which streets are paved. And it's a, it's a really, you know, process that makes things fair. And, and so I would challenge or be interested to know if we have a similar process that we use to select where we do our sidewalks and curbs. I did go out to that neighborhood myself and took a, took a look. Very fine neighborhood. Surely nice people there. But I also drove, drive my district and walk my district. And I have curbs that no longer exist falling out on the road. And so, you know, we have streets and sidewalks in District 1 and 2 that are, were built in the 60s and 70s. And so we just want to make sure that the pie is split evenly across the city of Lawrence. You know, if we have our older communities looking clean in a par, it makes everything look even that much better. So we just want to make sure that everyone gets what, you know, the pie gets treated equally. So thank you. Thank you, Counselor Denny. And we appreciate the work that the guys did. Thank you so much with that. So with any more discussion? Yes, Rick, Counselor Wells, sorry. Oh, it's Sheree. I'm sorry. Could you come on?
Mr. President, do you want, do you want to just give me a, like, want me to talk to you about this? How we select this and what we have done on the West Side? I mean, back in 2020, we did those two subdivisions, Harrison Park and Sambro Records on the West Side. And again, the selection is based on a base of rating process that we submit to INDOT. So we pick the streets based on the rating process. And as part of the streets, we are, we are committed to do ADA ramps and sidewalks. So the sidewalks is not the criteria we select. We select it based on the streets. And it is based, a very thorough process that INDOT makes me do it. Every year, we have to rate the streets. We have to submit it to them. And we pick streets based on that rating.
Okay, Sheree, I want to make sure that I hear you clearly and understand you correctly because I don't want any miscommunication or misunderstanding. Are you stating that we do have a process for selecting the sidewalks and curbs that we do?
The selection process for the community crossing grants is based on the condition of the road, not on the sidewalk. But a part of the deal with INDOT is when we select a road to get it registered first, we are supposed to fix the sidewalk, especially the ramps as part of the road project. But the roads are not selected based on the sidewalk. It's the other way. It's the condition of the road that dictates the project.
That makes sense, and I appreciate that. And, and, and so you're saying that the road in that community was in really bad shape compared to other parts? So it was ranked high on the list?
It, it has, it has been. And there are other streets we are continuing to chase. Like I said, back in 2020, we did further verser roads on Harrison Park and Sambro Records. So those were two subdivisions that we did, which were in much by a worse shape at that time. And then falling on the list was this one. So we just pick one, you know, the top, one, two, three, we go down the list. You're right.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you stepping in and giving us that answer. And we look forward to having, I look forward to having further conversation because I know that my district is in terrible need of sidewalk assistance. But anyway, we're still in the, sorry, I want to make sure we're so together here. We're still in the, in the, in the vouchers. Any more discussion? All right, we'll ask for a roll call vote. All right. We'll start. Do you want to vote it down?
I've got, I'm going to let you look the list.
Oh, oh, no, I just read the names. Counsel, you know, Counselor Shevlock.
Did I get some clarification on what Counselor Denny just, about the Kroger, Gardas bill? Are you asking it to be withdrawn?
Correct.
No.
No. Counselor Wells.
Yes.
Counselor Denny.
Yes.
Counselor Chavis.
Yes.
Counselor Giles, yes. Counselor Freeman.
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Counselor Rusomorov.
Yes.
Counselor Russell.
No.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the reports of committee. I'd like to start with the code committee.
Mr. President, we had our meeting this evening about 5 o'clock, and it was recommended to do pass to the full council.
All right, thank you. All right. We had a lot of busy, we had a busy day in finance. So Counselor Denny, get us started with that report as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we had a finance committee meeting just prior to this meeting. Five items were on the agenda. All five were recommended out of council, but I'm going to read the vote totals. So proposal number two is recommended 3 to 1. Proposal number three and four, 4 to 0. And resolution five and six, 3 to 1. So we're recommended out of the committee for the full council.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you so much. All right, next thing on the agenda. All right, we have a public hearing for proposal number two, which is appropriating additional funds and amending the 2023 budget with respect to the general fund.
There's a sign up sheet in the back.
Yes. I saw the sheet back there. Tom, you have, thank you, Tom.
And then the blue ones, the citizens.
Green ones for the hearing.
No, the white ones for the hearing and the blue ones for the citizens.
Chair, did we do council comments?
No.
Were we going over that?
No, you, so whatever, whatever comments that you have, you could make those on whichever proposal or resolution that you have.
Positive, that's all I was going to say, something.
I skipped that in the agenda today, so.
Okay, fine, I understand. Thank you.
So it's this one for the public hearing. All right. Do you open it up on a, on a, a time? It's a little. Open it now, could just call everybody. This is. All right. First name on the list, please, everyone, when you, for the folks to come up and talk. Come up, state your name, your address, and, you know, speak what you, say your deal. So first name on the list is Ms. Pamela Anderson.
How much time do they, tell them?
Oh, yeah, five, also, too, you have five. Is it three minutes or five? Five in the public hearing? You have five, okay.
Good evening, Pamela Anderson, 6722 Silver Tree Drive. I am requesting a no vote in ordinance 2, 2023. As a citizen, I spoke at the council meeting October 21 of 2021, where you amended the budget to reduce spending by $3.6 million. I was disappointed in the outcome of this decision, and the choice to reduce spending towards maintenance and advancements of our parks was a better choice than reducing funds towards first responders. However, as a mother to an active park attendee, I know the need for us to improve the parks with the city of Lawrence. I was excited when the common council approved $3.6 million in general obligation bonds during the November 16 meeting in 2022. This quickly changed when you repealed your decision in, on December 5, 2022. The council noted this change because of the budget reverting back to the approved 2021 budget, which resulted in reduced spending. This delay is clearly politically motivated and not in the best interest of the taxpayers. You state you want to do the right thing for the right reasons for this city. Yet, now you are proposing to amend the budget and approve and appropriate funds to increase spending by a minimum of $250,000, which also requires the city to spend more money in response to your accusations. This spending is unnecessary and irresponsible. Why would you, leaders of our city and fiduciary representatives, choose to only spend funds towards attorneys over bettering the projects like park pavement, stormwater, public safety vehicle replacements, and first responder education and training? For the past six years, Lawrence City Council has won the Government Finance Organization Award for Outstanding Budget Preparation. City of Lawrence has the best. City of Lawrence has, for the past five years, maintained an operating budget reserve of over 20%, which is gold standard for all cities. How is spending more money investigating a budget that is award-winning and continuing to show positive reserves justified? Why do we want to spend money on investigating a budget that expired in 2022? The time to address this would have been immediately following the budget adoption in 2021 and early on in 2022. Clearly, this budget issue is motivated by politics in an election year. As a community member and taxpayer, it should not be my responsibility to, as you state, foot the bill for an investigation that has nothing more than a form of bullying and a lack of fiduciary knowledge by you, the council. Taxpayers vote on your ability to comprehend and make the best decision in our interest. Our interest as a community is to improve our parks, support our first responders, and have strong council leadership provide fiscal transparency, all to improve the future of Lawrence. I reached out to council to ask questions regarding this appropriation, and I was met with silence, diversion, and a lack of understanding. You have asked the city for transparency, yet you do not provide that yourselves. When taking your oath of office, each council member affirms that they are faithfully and partially and diligently discharging the duties of the office. Frivolously spending taxpayer money and slowing down progress does not align with the sworn oath, nor did it align with your commitment to our community as elected officials and candidates. I ask the council to eliminate the fees to fund the investigation and vote no to ordinance number two. Thank you.
Everyone is due to their opinions on the facts, and I'm not going to speak on that. But I do respect my time. And when I call someone and speak to them for 45 minutes, I don't expect for them to say that they were received by silence. So I just want to say for the record, Ms. Anderson, you called me. We spoke for 45 minutes. And so I don't run from any questions. I don't run from any person. I am a stand-up person and a leader of this council at this time. Your, your time is over, Ms. Anderson? Your time is over, Ms. Anderson? Your time is over. I said nothing during your time. It's over. Please sit down. Please. Part of the public hearing is for those that come up on the list to speak their word. They have five minutes to speak their word. Once you leave from the podium, your time is over. I only was responding because we want facts on the record. We are not running. We're not hiding. It's straightforward. And every, and obviously, you guys all know where I live. So nobody's running. Okay? All right. Next person on the agenda, on the deal. Sign up. If, and anyone who wants to speak, you can sign up, and you can have your speak. You can talk. Okay? So the next person up is Mrs. Heather Hewitt, 6420 Oaklandon Drive.
Good evening. My name is Heather Hewitt, and I have a small business on 6420 Oaklandon Road. I also have been paying close attention to the actions of the members of the council related to the so-called investigation of 2022 proposed budget in 2021, how it failed to pass in tonight's proposal. It is my understanding that tonight you are attempting to appropriate or set aside a quarter of a million taxpayer dollars to pay for the needless work of lawyers, accountants, and financial analysts to evaluate the city's budgeting practices, where there is absolutely no due cause. This is totally unnecessary and uncalled for. There is also no cause for concern, no missing money, no questionable spending. There is nothing. Why would any of you support this waste of money that should be spending on the city's for improvements to our citizens, to the quality of the, of our citizens' lives? Things like the parks, things like paving, how many playgrounds could we buy with $250,000? Keep in mind, for everything I have seen for the past seven years, Mayor Collier's administration has performed commendably. They have demonstrated time and time again a proven track record of transparency, professionalism, and honesty in their handling of our city's monies. And there is simply no cause to launch an investigation, however, other than to falsely paint this administration as suspicious or a smear campaign, when it literally, when literally things in Lawrence have never been better than they are right now. In my 20-plus years of living here, I have been anything, I have never seen anything amiss in this budgeting process. You all would have known about it long before now. You all approve budgets. You all hire financial people to help with this. Why are we just now questioning the city's proposed budget from more than two years ago? Where is the smoking gun? There is not one. Steve Collier's team has done nothing to justify this. In fact, they have won nationally recognized awards for six years for their budgeting preparation. They don't hand out awards to cities who are doing the wrong thing. I am proud of this city and how far we have come. Please vote no on this. Please stop this unwarranted and tremendously expensive investigation. Please do the right thing for your citizens and their families.
All right. Next on the agenda is, I apologize. I can't quite read the last name, so I'm sorry if I. First name's Jim. Is it Hardo? I don't know what, I'm sorry. Hardy, okay.
Good evening. Jim Hardy, 10810 Indian Lake Boulevard South. As a citizen and taxpayer of this city, I'm here to request a no vote on ordinance 2, 2023. Would also first like to take the time to personally thank Mayor Steve Collier and his team of professional administrators who have moved our city forward with a positive vision that is well-received and respected. When you look around, you see all the new growth in and around Fort Harrison, the new business opening, businesses opening up around the city. Our highly professional and dedicated DPW workers always out in the streets taking care of business, clean parks, and most importantly, the top-notch public safety teams, where if you need 911, you get dedicated professionals in minutes. About eight years ago, the city was in the worst place in its history. With frivolous spending and horrible fiscal management, that past administration plunged our city into junk credit, sold off our garbage collection, laid off employees, sat back and watched as services diminished, buildings and infrastructure deteriorated, tore down the morale of our valued city employees and put our citizens in a bad place. So thank you so much, so very much, Mayor Collier and your team for saving the city and the hard work you continue to provide for all of us. I'd like to go on record to say that lately, including the last time I approached the council, I have witnessed some very concerning moves by the council to handcuff the mayor and the city administration and to stop the great progress this city deserves. And for me to totally understand that, I looked at Facebook meetings, watched those, asked questions specifically about ordinance 2, and then saw the ordinance itself. Again, you all campaigned about being fiscally responsible, and that public safety was your priority. But you're proposing to move $250,000 from our city's current reserve fund to pay an investigation that occurred the previous fiscal year. That makes absolutely no sense. And to me, that money should stay put, or if you're going to spend $250,000, public safety, parks, and just like the two ladies that came before me explained to you, there are several things that that money can go towards. Approving ordinance 2 is a total waste of my taxpayer dollars and the definition of frivolous spending. Please explain to all of us what your reasoning intentions are to frivolously spend our taxpayer dollars. As I see it, you're just holding up the great progress of our true city leaders who have made a plan and continue to do that long into the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person on the list. Again, I apologize if I don't get the name correct. Last name is Daniels. First name, maybe Matt, maybe? I'm not, okay.
Hello, my name is Mateo Daniel, 10528 Sedg Grass, you know, right behind the cruise car wash. So I'm here to ask you guys to go ahead and vote for that investigation. The main reasoning is, yeah, there's a lot of weird stuff going on. There's a lot of back and forth, and I firmly believe that money should be going towards things like our public safety, like connecting our city. I'm mountain biking Fort, Fort Ben almost every weekend. But when I'm sitting here looking at the arguments on both sides, I'm honestly confused, and the only thing that's ever being mentioned is the money, is where it's getting spent. Never are any of the points being addressed, why are you guys moving for this proposal? What, how did we get here? Where are the receipts? If people are saying, hey, this wasn't submitted in time or this didn't go through the proper channels? This is 2023. We got emails. Where are the emails? Aren't we seeing those? So in this, in everyone saying, hey, this is, this is a misappropriation of funds, this is a misappropriation of your guys' duty to us to make sure that we can see what's happening, make sure that we can see where things are getting spent, where the communication is going? Because you guys have a hard job. But at the end of the day, we are Lawrence, the citizens who live here, the people who go out every day and, you know, we catch the bus and we work in the city and we live in the city, we raise our kids here. So when you guys are going through this trying to vote, you have to think, is this what's best for Lawrence? Have we shown Lawrence our due diligence in making sure that all of our evidences is on the table? So when it comes to this investigation, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the administration come forward and show us the actual evidence. Where are the receipts? Where are the timestamps? Where are the dates? And if we can't get that, then we need to move forward with the investigation. And I support that.
Thank you. Next, next on the agenda is Mr. Jennifer Turasi. What's her name? Turasi, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Jennifer Turasi, 8328 Bent Oak Drive. My mom served on the Parks Board for over 30 years. I have never known a time where my mom was not on the board, until a few years ago, when she called into question unexplained activity with the budget. Shortly after that, she was notified that it was the position of the mayor that her service as a member of the board come to an end. So I am here to show my mom that I am her daughter, and she did not raise me to be quiet. Once is an oversight. Grace can be given that maybe I should have paid more attention, done more diligence. I support the council's ability to manage the budget and believe that there needs to be checks in place. I have been a resident of the city of Lawrence for over three decades, and I have the privilege to raise my children here. So I do appreciate the council's ability to manage a well-balanced budget, to manage a well-balanced budget, and I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. Next person is, next, I'm sorry. Next person on the agenda, Mr. Aaron Short.
Good evening, council. My name's Aaron Short, 12453 Doe Lane. I'm a local resident, I'm a business owner, a dad, and my wife and I have called Lawrence home for about a decade. I am proud of this city. I'm so proud of where we live. Thank you for your service. I can't imagine the energy and the wisdom it takes to sit in those chairs. And I am so proud of the development that we have seen over the last couple decades, and it is in large part because of your stewardship. I'm proud that we have an A-plus bond rating. I'm proud that we live in a city where we have over 20% in operating reserves. It's incredible that we consistently receive national accolade for our good governance and good finance. And for that reason, today I rise in opposition to proposal number two on the grounds that I firmly believe this agenda demonstrates a clear lack of stewardship, is an embarrassment to our taxpayers, and I believe this money, a quarter, a quarter of a million dollars, could be better spent on the people and the improvement of our city, better spent on the things that help widows, firefighters, teachers, disabled-bodied individuals. I recently had a client, elderly woman in her 80s, recently widowed, driving down Pendleton Pike after a rainstorm. She couldn't see a pothole. She hit it. It burst her tire, damaged her rim. $700, $700, half of her social security administrative check. An elderly widow trying to make ends meet. I had a conversation with a firefighter last week. Firefighter, he shared with me that his wife and him were struggling to make ends meet. She took on an extra job to pay for some extra prescription drugs for their kid who's sick. A firefighter and his wife struggling to make ends meet for their sick kid.
The median income of a starting fireman in the city of Lawrence is more than the median income of the city of Marion County.
And I'm proud of that. Thank you, thank you for that.
Say, we support our firemen. They're getting paid good money.
And we're on the same page. We're on the same page, and that's what's awesome about this. We're on the same page. We're in this together. That's incredible. And a while back, a friend of mine was paralyzed from the waist down, a young guy living in Lawrence. The sidewalk close to his house was severely cracked, broken, not within ADA compliance. He moved out of Lawrence to a city that was more accommodating for disabled-bodied people. A young guy trying to find a new life. I heard a story about a Lawrence Township school teacher who was trying to get an after-school club started, a club that is designed to help Spanish-speaking minorities, many of them lawful immigrants, Latinos, and recent refugees learn English. This teacher had graciously reached into her pocket, pulled out $400 and paid for it to get this program lifted. A teacher helping immigrants and Latinos and refugees find the American dream. Councilmen, councilwomen, leaders, candidates. Years ago, when you set out to run for common council, what was your vision then? What is your vision now? What is your vision? Did you come here to be part of a political establishment or did you come here to help people? And if you came here to help people, folks, there are people in this community who need you. We need you. We're looking for leadership. People, constituents, neighbors, need you. We need help. We need better roads, better infrastructure, more ADA compliance public services for all to enjoy, not to mention the curbs and the sidewalks in District 1, sir. Our firefighters, our police officers, our teachers and our public employees deserve better pay. And you're seriously contemplating spending a quarter million dollars to a corporate law firm in Indianapolis to investigate and arrive at what we already know, contrary to what was said earlier. This is very, very simple. Thank you, ma'am. The budget was passed two years ago based off of the reversion process. That's completely lawful, and I appreciate, I appreciate this council's time. Thank you.
Sir, since you're there, one thing that I want to make sure in this community is that folks understand what's really going on. So, one piece of information I want to share with you, I think it's good for the record. Pendleton Pike is not the responsibility to pay Pendleton Pike for the city of Lawrence. We have representation for the city-county council downtown. I'm disappointed in the potholes in, on Pendleton Pike. And so, I would also encourage you to go down and talk to your city-county councillor about those, about those, about those things. So, I just wanted to just give that, that to you as we, as we want to see a better paved Pendleton Pike.
Great, thank you, sir. We're on the same page. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Murphy. Are you here as a citizen or as an employee?
I haven't worked for the city of Lawrence since August of last year, sir.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure you're working for Garmin, and they are, they do a lot of work for us, sir.
I'm not under contract with the city in any capacity, but thank you. I'm here as a citizen. I live at 11824 Bell Ridge Drive, and I'm here to request no on ordinance number two, 2023. As a resident who's been following the ongoing budget disagreement between the city administration and the common council, I am growing alarmed at the amount of taxpayer dollars being spent on this investigation. I've done my best to keep informed on this issue by watching common council meetings on the YouTube page as well as reading the meeting minutes when they're posted on the city webpage by our county clerk, our city clerk, I'm sorry. One thing I continue to ask myself as I watch these council meetings and I watch all these resources being poured into this issue is what is the ultimate goal of this investigation? It appears to me that there was no large embezzlement scandal going on at this time. There was no serious wrongdoing on a large scale. There's no criminal activity going on. I would imagine that the DLGF, who did approve the 2022 budget, would not have allowed that to happen had they suspected something seriously nefarious was going on. So, ultimately, I have to conclude that the city council wishes to spend another quarter of a million dollars of taxpayer money just to grind an ax against the city's mayor and the city's controller who they don't care for. And that just seems like a blatant waste of money to me, in my personal opinion. I would encourage all council members, as well as my fellow citizens here today and watching on our Facebook page and YouTube page, to spend some time on the city's webpage in the coming days as they continue to follow this issue. The question was asked earlier, you know, where are the receipts? Where are the documents? I believe you'll find everything you need right there to make a decision for yourself about what's going on in the city of Lawrence. In my experience, the city of Lawrence is highly transparent when it comes to its financial dealings. They have cappings of all meeting agendas for all boards, and they have meeting minutes for you to read and follow at your own leisure. They have links to videos which are posted on our YouTube page for you to watch them back and understand what's going on for yourself. They post monthly financial statements, annual financial reports, city budgets, and all for citizens to read on their website at their own pleasure. I do read those documents, and what they tell me is that the city of Lawrence remains financially strong. They tell me the city of Lawrence continues to be recognized nationally for its ability to meet the highest level of governmental budgeting, and that's a quote from the GF away. Those aren't my opinions. That's a fact. Another thing I've learned in my research is something that makes sense to a lot of us who are sitting here today, if we've checked our own bank accounts for the last 18 months, which is that money's just not going as far as it used to. Local government budgets aren't growing at the rate they need to keep up with inflation. I'm very sympathetic to that issue going on right now in some areas. I know in some areas, our budgets are actually shrinking, not growing, which is having, is causing more issues with meeting rising costs. Costs for construction of roads, parks, fire equipment, police equipment are all skyrocketing right now while budgets sink. Making a balanced budget meet needs of residents in normal times is difficult enough. I can't imagine what's going on right now. But the fact that the common council's forcing the city administration to hand over a quarter of a million dollars out of its general fund for this investigation when times are at their toughest is unacceptable. As a citizen, it just can't happen, and I refuse to allow my money to go to this end, and I would hate to see that happen. That quarter of a million dollars should be spent towards improving Lawrence public safety, parks, roads, or anything else, just not another investigation. Once again, please vote no on ordinance two, 2023. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for all the people who commented. The public hearing is now closed. All right. Back to unfinished business. Back to agendas, councilors. Unfinished business. Proposal number one, 2023. The clerk will read by title.
Proposal number one, 2023. Introduced by Councilor Shephlot. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to remove no parking zones along Otis Avenue.
Thank you. I'd entertain, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve proposal number one.
Second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Shephlot. Any discussion? Seeing none? Councilor Wells, you still with us, sir? All right. With a roll call vote, by the show of hands. Councilor Russell? Councilor Smorov?
Yes.
Councilor Whitfield?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman?
Yes.
Councilor Giles, yes. Councilor Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Denny?
Yes.
Councilor Wells? Councilor Wells?
Yes.
All right, all right. And Councilor Shephlot? All right. Seven, I'm a nine-oh, or eight, or nine-oh, yeah.
Proposal two, you ready? Proposal number two, 2023. Introduced by Councilors Giles and Chavis. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of City of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating additional funds and amending the 2023 budget with respect to the general fund.
All right. Can I get a motion, or can I get a motion?
Mr. President, real quick. The amended ordinance number two was what was recommended out of committee. So, I'd make a motion to amend ordinance number two.
Accept the amended?
To accept the amended version.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Chavis. Any discussion? No discussion, any discussion?
Mr. President, can you go over the amended version, please?
Let me give that to Councilor Denny.
So, the amended version drew in some more facts and let us know some of the need here. And I believe there's a legal component to it, but part of it, and to answer some of the questions that were raised here, this, this discussion began in December, and we actually moved a budget line within our own budget to cover these expenses in December, which the mayor has said that that wasn't a legal meeting in which we held that vote. I contend that that was a legal meeting, that I do believe we had a legal appropriation at that time. However, to get the, to keep this moving, we've brought this forth and amended it. And I would defer to our legal counsel on the other parts of this, which involve the legality of our move.
Before we go there, I think it's important for the records that you just said something. I want to say it a little bit louder. The $250,000 that we're appropriating today was $250,000 that was in the council's budget that we moved from capital improvement over to professional services to be able to pay our lawyer to do an investigation that we feel that we have the right to do. So, this money is also, when you talk about fiscal responsibility, this money was saved up by the council at $50,000 per time to get to an amount of, to get to an amount of money so that we could do something. We did not want to use this money for, for, it was not set aside nor did we have a purpose to use it for an investigation-type deal. So, I wanted to let you know that. So, anything that the mayor's budget had planned to do, it's still line items are there to do because the $250,000 that we had had no plans unless we directed it. So, our $250,000 has nothing to do with the plans of the administration and the funding that they have. Public safety is fully funded. Everyone is fully funded. This money is not taken from anyone. So, I just want to make sure that that is clear and appropriate. And I see people in the crowd shaking their heads. Well, you know, it's funny how, it's, it's fun, it is taxpayers' money, and I hope, ma'am, and I would love for you, but it's taxpayer dollars that we use. And as you, if you pay attention to this, I ask that you go look into the budget book and look at all the expenses that we do, and we're trying to protect your taxpayer dollars by having an investigation. That is my statement. Is there any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Just when looking at this money, is there, is this the only way by spending, this is just...
It's not the only way.
Okay. Let me finish my question real quick. Meaning, we have services with Kathy where we can say things with her on public record? Like, where we can say, like, am I correct, Kathy? Like, if we were to request to have, like, a meeting where we can say, can we have this on the record? Like, within, like, a council? Am I wrong in understanding that?
What do you mean, like, on the record?
Like, if we can speak, like...
If you have a statement and you want to insert it to the minutes?
Not necessarily, like, if it's in a meeting or if we're talking, or if we wanted to make sure everything was formal, like, if we were meeting or something or had something? Am I incorrect in knowing that or my understanding of the council?
I don't know what you're asking.
I'm not sure either.
I'm just saying, is there, is this the only way to spend this money? Or is there other ways that maybe, just, because this is just a lot of money to spend in regards to the investigation? I'm just...
Okay, so I'm going to try to see from pulling. So, you're asking, do we, can we have the investigation without spending $250,000?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Absolutely. So, when we found out that the budget reverted over a year later, we were not aware. No one told us. We then asked the administration and the Controller's office to hand over documents and information. At every turn, they have not been forthcoming with that information, and that is why we have to continue on with the investigation. I don't have any answers. I don't know if any wrongdoing, doing was done. I don't know, I don't know. And that's why we're trying to get an investigation. Only thing I know is I approved, this council approved the budget, and it was not submitted. That's what we know. And so, all we're trying to figure out, so, yes, all the documents could have came, and I'll leave this over to you to even take that further.
Yeah, I mean, all of the documents so far, except for the ones under which administration is claiming attorney-client privilege, which is a valid objection, or executive privilege, which we do not believe exists for mayors in this state, and they've cited USV Nixon in support of that claim, should be matters of public record. Does that answer your question, Lawrence? I'm still not sure I understood that.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I apologize. I'm trying to understand this all, too. I, I think ultimately what my question was is, just coming from a basic budget, understanding a budget, is there a cheaper way we can do this? Because $250,000...
Yes, the cheapest way to do this is if the administration would hand over all the documents, all the information that we've requested, and we don't have to pay additional lawyers and additional folks. But that did not happen in November. Just like right now, we're going to have to do further things because we want to have an investigation. And the administration does not want to have an investigation. And the people who investigate don't work for free. And we weren't told, we passed, a budget was proposed, we edited, we changed that budget. The mayor vetoed that budget. We overrode that budget, and the budget was not submitted. Somebody also said, I want to address, they said that this was a process. I have called and I have spoken to councilors and folks in other cities. I've talked to other attorneys. It is unprecedented. No one has ever heard of it. So, we're having an investigation to figure out what's right and what's wrong so that we can move this city forward and not go back to this, and we can have the confidence to spend the money appropriately.[1627.54] to spend the money appropriately. And so we're just trying to get an investigation, we're just trying to pay the folks so that we can know what's right moving forward, because things happen that we were unaware of. It's just that simple.
Are we still under discussion?
Absolutely.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
You keep saying that the budget wasn't submitted. It was submitted. The DLGF does show that the budget was submitted and it was reverted back, but I'm just going to go back to one thing. I just strike this.
I don't work for the DJ, well, you, I just want to answer back that I don't work for the DJF. I have not worked, I have not seen that, you know, seen that, and if that was the case, I don't think we would be this far along down the road.
Under, under the public comment rules, no responses to comments, questions, or concerns will be provided during the hearing. Hearings are a one-way conversation. Given the fact that you've taken upon yourself to have a two-way conversation, I would move to strike this from the agenda.
Strike what from the agenda of the hearing?
I'll second it.
And so we could bring that to?
I'm moving to strike proposal number two from the agenda, given that the rules for the public hearing were not followed.
I'll second it.
Oh, wow.
They weren't followed. You didn't follow.
And that's one of the issues we're having. It's fine, that's the issue. We're about intent, not technicalities. So that's fine? No, you're right, you're absolutely right. So you have a motion, and I have the council rules right in my hand, but you have a motion, and we have a vote. But, but you actually don't have a motion because we have another motion on the floor. So you, so we have to finish that one to get to yours. So we were in discussion. Now, is that proper? You sure?
I'm positive.
I'm asking you, I asked her, but you don't always agree with her, so I'm asking you.
You're looking at me, am I sure? Yes, I'm sure about what I just?
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is it proper that we're in the middle of a motion, and we'll get this one done, and then we can address yours? I just want to make sure I'm following the rules right by you.
Well, you're going to follow the rules now, good.
By you?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so we have this, we have a motion, it's been, it's been seconded, roll call, Counselor Chevlat?
No.
Counselor Wells?
The button won't work.
We hear you, Counselor Wells.
I need to see him.
I'm saying, I'm going abstain.
You abstain?
Yes, abstain.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
No.
Seven-two, motion pass.
One, two, three, four, six, two, one.
Six, two, one.
Six.
Motion pass.
By the way, we're only voting on the amended version.
Now, you have your motion, sir.
Sir? Make a motion, strike it, given the council, the public meeting rules were not followed.
I second it.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote. Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
No.
Counselor Chavis?
No.
Counselor Giles?
No.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
No.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
It's five. Thank you.
I'm wrong, sorry. So I'm confused on the, because they went too fast.
I'm confused.
So I think, I think Counselor Giles, just like we've done previously, I would call for a revote. It seems as though there is some confusion. Um, excuse me, point of order. And yeah, I'm going to call it. So as we've done before, I would ask, I would request that we do a revote.
Yes, please.
It seems as though, from looking at all counselors, that they're confused about the vote.
Yes.
So can we please, I'm requesting a revote, and can someone please explain what we're voting on?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I would like to request that also because I am confused. I know that we voted for the amendment of the ordinance number two, and now we're trying to vote for the strikes, the ordinance. So if you vote yes, you are voting to strike the matter from the agenda, which essentially kills it. If you vote no, then it remains on the agenda, and it is to, then there would be a motion, if there is one, to approve it as amended.
Say that again one more time.
Please. If you vote yes, it kills the ordinance. It strikes it from the agenda. If you vote no, it stays on the agenda for a vote as to whether it should be approved. So if you want to keep an investigation, you vote no. If you do not want an investigation, you vote yes.
That wasn't.
Well.
Point, call of order.
Let's be clear on the legal issue. What matters is not whether the rules were followed. This, what matters is whether everyone who wished to speak at this hearing, who signed up to speak, was able to speak. And the list was completed, and there was no harm done by the president's response. And it is not unheard of by this president, by that president, and by others before this council to speak during public hearings to help clarify issues. It doesn't affect anybody's rights to speak and say whatever they wanted to say, and they all did. That does not nullify the validity of the public hearing, nor does it nullify the council's action, to be clear. So clarity, I would like, due to the fact that I misunderstood what we were voting on, I would like to recall the vote, please, or resend my vote. What is the legal?
Well, I, I think we're going to rerun.
We're going to revoke, because I was writing when people started making.
Kathy didn't even get them all down.
I didn't even get them all down because I was writing, and then people were voting, so.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the clarity, please.
Right, so it was, it was a strike from the public hearing. So she asked for a revote, so we can start a revote over. Is everyone clear to what Tom's motion, what Tom's motion is?
More time. Yes, you agree with Tom to strike it from the agenda. A no vote is, it stays on the agenda for a second substantive vote.
Yes, for clarity, I didn't interrupt you. Tom, can you say what your motion was again?
I moved to strike it from the agenda because the rules of the public meeting were not followed. Regardless of whether it's been done in the past or not is irrelevant. The rules were not followed, so therefore I have the privilege to be able to call this up to strike it from the agenda because the rules were not followed.
Absolutely. He has the privilege to do that. But the, but the key is, is that it's the hearing, and so that if we pass, the thing is, once you pass, if we say no to his deal, then everything we've done keeps going. That's the deal. It's coaching?
I just want the record to show that I was confused.
Right.
And I would like to have a revote, please.
Yes. Funny, though, everybody's an attorney these days. All right. Counselor Russell? Counselor Rusamorov?
No.
Counselor Whitfield?
No.
Counselor Freeman?
No.
Counselor Giles?
No.
Counselor Chavis?
No.
Counselor Denny?
No.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat? Yes.
Three, six, motion failed.
Three, six, motion fails. Thank you. Next thing on the?
We have.
I got a vote on the, I thought we voted on the amendment.
To adopt the amendment.
On the amendment, okay. So do I ask for another motion for that?
Yep.
Right. So to ask for a motion, so ask for a motion on the amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the adopted amendment.
Amendment version. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I was, there was some legal parts to this that I don't think our, our council, council was able to touch on in the last discussion. Chris, could, would you be able to touch on a few things that we talked about during the Finance Committee?
Sure.
Yeah. Specifically, the add-on, what we're accepting in the amended version.
So the amended version adds a couple of whereas clauses, but I think, Counselor Denny, if I understand what you're asking, what is probably most important is the amendment includes quotations from the mayor's testimony under oath on February 3rd in the investigation, in which attorney was asked in the following question. And so I'll ask you again, Mayor, the council is asking for an appropriation. Answer from the mayor specifically. Question, $250,000 for the budget investigation of you and your administration because it's going to be very expensive. Answer, I understand that. Question, and your response is, answer, the council has yet to ask me for an appropriation. Answer, I just asked, or sorry, question, I just asked you on behalf of the council. You said earlier that the council or their legal answer, I won't answer, and I think this is a typo in the transcript, audio is the word, in that, in this, in that theater. Question, so you're refusing to answer my question. Mayor's answer, if there is a formal request, we will do it. And also, so, so the mayor said under oath that he would approve the investigation on February 3rd. Then he proceeded to say he's never been asked. The council asked repeatedly for his support of their request of an additional appropriation, which again was council's money to spend, not taking away from another department. Later, attorneys for the council again appealed, asking for support for the council to use its own money that it had already transferred in December of 2022. Then Council President Giles made a public appeal for the mayor's cooperation on February 6th in the public meeting. And then despite his testimony under oath on February 3rd, in a letter dated February 26th, vetoing resolution four, the mayor announced he was going to veto this appropriation ordinance before it was even passed. So those steps were added to the amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I do want to add a couple more comments. So for me, this is a real simple need for this investigation, because the council did approve a budget. We worked very hard to create a balanced budget going into 2022. When that ballot, we, we voted on that, it was passed, there was a lot of debate, some of you were here for that debate, there was a lot of debate for that. The budget that was passed by this council was a legal budget that was not entered by the administration. The question is, why was that budget not entered by the administration? And to Counselor Giles's point, we've never heard of any other city that has taken a, the council passed a budget, and then the administration did not just put it into the computer. We've never, I've never found one that did that. This investigation could have been completed in January had we just got all of the facts out there and not had to fight. If you remember, we were on the verge of passing, we did pass the subpoena ordinance, and it was two hours before we took that vote that they finally released the documents we had requested for five weeks. It took that ordinance in order to get this passed. The results of not entering that budget increased our spending by over $2 million that the council didn't approve, and it increased property tax. It resulted in a property tax increase. That's on the record. That is, that is, that is a fact. And it increased the budget by $2 million, which we didn't approve. For me, my main concern has always been the unbudgeted, the un, the unallocated obligations that the city has towards the fire retirements, the police retirements, and the pensions. We have these unfunded obligations that those reserves must stay above the 20% by a lot in order to make sure that we cover that. The reserves have now fallen from where we were at around $9 million to, I believe, it's closer to $5, with no, that's what's in the budget book, we could, and without an explanation as to where that spending went. So through this agenda, you see tonight, yeah, there is a tightening. I want to know where the money's going, and that's what I'm asking more about from the administration, where the money's going, and please explain it. And if we look, there's only one vote this council took that didn't approve what the, what the administration has asked, and that was regarding stormwater. And we asked for there to be more bonds, before we'd issued those bonds, that they investigate grants, which they have, and we've seen multiple grants been approved for stormwater. That's the only vote, that's the only thing this, this council did not approve from this administration. Otherwise, we asked questions, we didn't rubber stamp a lot of things, but otherwise, we have approved every single thing Mayor Collier has brought forward. And for that, for us to be at this point is a disappointment for me, because I do not feel we need to be here had it, had it not been for this complete attempt to cover up what happened and to deny us the information. But.
I appreciate that, Counsel, I appreciate that, Counselor Denny. I appreciate that because sometimes it's an issue of how we have this, we, we want like the stormwater. I think that was really important, because many of you guys were in the room, and you thought that the, the bonds were the only way. And I told them to apply for Okra grant, and that's what they got. And the reason I knew about the Okra grant was because of my time on the USB. And so we are looking for ways to stretch the dollar so that we can improve our parks and do more. And so thank you so much for that clarity. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Seeing none, I'll ask for a, we got a motion, we ask for, I got a motion, a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote again. So we'll start with.
Excuse me, President Giles, I'm sorry. I've lost count of where we're at and what the motion is. Could you please restate that motion?
Absolutely.
Just for my own, make sure I'm on the right page.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a motion to adopt the amended version.
Of, of, of proposal, resolution five.
We already?
Yeah, proposal four, proposal number four.
Well, I thought we already adopted the amended.
No, we accepted the amended.
Accepted.
Okay, got it, got it. We are losing.
So Counselor Chavis has a motion to accept the amended version. Counselor Denny has seconded, and any further discussion?
I just want us to adopt.
To adopt the amendment, yeah, to adopt. Any further discussion? Adopt the amended version. Seeing none, we'll start with Counselor Chavis this time.
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Abstain.
Counselor, Counselor Chevlat?
No.
Counselor Russell?
No.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Six, two, one.
Six, two, one. All right, where we at here? Resolution five?
On proposal three.
All right.
Just got done with two.
We have proposal three. Wow, we're getting out of here. All right, this is getting crazy. Can you read it by title?
Proposal three, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title III, Article I, Chapter I, Section II of the municipal code regarding pre-approved payment of claims.
All right. Do we have, oh, entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, a second. Second, Counselor Rusamorov. Any discussion? Or actually, let's, let's, let's call, things have been, it's been a long meeting. Let's, Counselor Denny, can you speak on the intent?
Sure.
Of this, of this proposal?
So this proposal basically says that other than items of payroll, state and federal county taxes, or other federal obligations, that this council must approve invoices before they're paid. And then, once they're paid, then they, the controller can go ahead and set those up for payment. It's no different than other Class II cities do across the state. It's no different than what our school district here in Lourdes, how they handle their obligations.
Does everyone have an understanding of that? Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Counselor Russell?
No.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Chevlat?
Seven, two.
All right, next item on the agenda, if you can read by title, please.
Proposal four, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title I, Article I, Chapter II, Section 12 of municipal code regarding common council approval of expenditures of professional service contracts.
All right. Counselor Denny, I'd like to call on you to, to, to explain the intent of this proposal as well.
So this is a modifying a proposal that was actually sponsored by then-Councilman Collier. And basically, it's, it's exactly like the $25,000 professional service ordinance we have now, but we're lowering that amount to $5,000, and then we're, we're asking that the contractor, or requiring the contract be within the fiscal year instead of a rolling 12 months, which makes it much easier to, to maintain, you know, our, our tracking and to make sure that we're within that budget line, that budget requirement.
I have a question. Does that go for all contracts, like, such as like public safety with like, with the city and stuff like that?
It is exactly as it is now, so it's all the professional services contracts, which, and then I'm, sorry, I'm writing here's a little.
Counselor Denny, I want to stop you there. I just wanted to make you clear on the, on the, what the resolution was.
Yes.
Now, we want to go ahead and get, we need to get a...
Oh, I'm so sorry, I, did I do it out of order?
Right, no, 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 you did a great thing. I just want to keep us...
Yeah, yeah.
In order. So, can I get a motion?
I don't want them to do a motion. I move to approve.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Thank you, I'm...
There you go, all right.
Apologies.
No, no, no.
Could you clarify that? I just, the reason why I'm asking is just, we do have a lot of contracts within the city, such as with city employees and things, public safety. Is that, do we have to approve those at the beginning? At the, like, is that going to cause any delay for approving contracts for us, more work? Like, I just, I want to clarify, is all.
Well, the police and fire contractor not part of that. This is for professional services.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
President Giles, if I might ask one question? Could you possibly include and exclude those services or expenses that this would account for? So, for instance, those items, just generally, that would be excluded from this ordinance change? And those that would be included? Obviously, considering Councilor Chavis' information she's just given? Is that too confusing?
Are you asking for the discussion? It's included in the ordinance. It is written in there, but...
Right, I'm just asking if we might notate those for this audience and others? Yeah, just for the record, just to generally show those items that would be excluded. Don't go too into great, great detail, obviously, but then kind of list those items that would be included within this. And then, of course, considering Councilor Chavis' information.
Chair, can I, can I follow up my statement? So, I, I think to simplify it, we just need, maybe for the good of the order and for those who are, are, you know, watching on Facebook, a definition of what is included for professional services? Because this, this resolution only deals with professional services. Yeah, so...
Yes, you can read definition of professional services.
So, the, Councilor Rusomorov, the definition included in the proposed ordinance is, "An expenditure for professional services or to retain a consultant or other professional is defined to mean a financial disbursement to an individual or corporate entity who is to be or has been retained by the city of Lawrence as an independent contractor, which means not an employee, providing professional services or any contractor that is paid from the other services and charges major budget category. Examples include, but are not limited to, legal professionals, government affairs consultants, engineers, architects, accountants, and other financial, political, or legal consultants. It explicitly does not include payments via payroll to city employees, contracts for products, or expenditures for infrastructure projects."
Thank you.
So, wouldn't, so it wouldn't delay any, nothing that, you know, of pressing would be delayed?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. And we'll start with Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Denny.
Yes.
Councilor Wells.
Yes.
Councilor Chevlat.
No.
Councilor Russell.
Excuse me, um, no.
Councilor Rusomorov.
Yes.
Councilor Whitfield.
Yes.
Council Freeman.
Yes.
7-2.
7-2, motion carries.
Ready. Motion five.
Resolution number five, 2023, introduced by Councilor Denny. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of appropriations between major budget classifications.
All right. Okay, resolution number five. So, can I, yes, let's, we get started, it's going to get a mo, I go entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second? I'll second it. Council Giles. All right, discussion.
Okay. Can we take a quick recess?
Yes, we'll take a recess, please. All right, thank you, everyone. We'll call to order now, get back to council, city of Lawrence common council meeting is now called back into order. I don't know if that's the proper thing to do. All right. Okay, let's keep my brain going here. We were...
Resolution five.
Look at the minutes and see exactly where we're at.
Resolution five, you had a motion and a second, and ready to vote.
Okay, so we had a motion, a second, ready to vote.
Unless there's more discussion.
Okay, so, resolution number five, authorizing the transfer of appropriations between major budget classifications, is what we're, what we're on here. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll get this agenda moving. No further discussion? Then I will ask for a roll call vote, starting with Councilor Rusomorov. Would you like me to go another one?
I'm sorry, was a motion made?
The motion, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, get it here. So, the motion, I'm sorry, let's, let's get back to that, it's good to know. Motion was made, we had a second, we were in discussion. And so, we have, I had asked for any further discussion on, on, on resolution five. Should, should anyone have any further discussion? It's authorizing the transfer of appropriation between major budget classifications.
No discussion, thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry, a lot of excitement today.
Yeah, a lot of excitement.
But I will, are you asking for my vote?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Council Whitfield.
Yes.
Council Freeman.
Yes.
Councilor Giles is a yes. Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Denny.
Yes.
Councilor Wells.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Council, uh, Chevlat.
No.
No. All right.
Six, right.
Resolution number six, 2023, introduced by Councilor Denny. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, approving the Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC contract to develop a comprehensive financial plan.
Did everyone hear that? All right. Can I, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion?
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Second? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Possibly clarification in regards to the scope of Baker and Tilly's, please.
Council Denny, can you speak on that, please?
Yeah, I just happen to have it attached to this ordinance was a, a scope of work appendix. Just happen to have that pulled up. And it, basically, this is exactly what Baker Tilly has done for us the last couple of years, which is just to review and create a comprehensive cash flow and financial outlook. Now, instead of going to 2025, we'll go to 2026, so that we can see what those cash reserves, what those outlooks will be, what spending requirements may be for each department. Basically, just a full future analysis and then revenue projection of the city.
Thank you.
All right, with that, any further, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, just go ahead, I'll ask for a roll call vote, starting with Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Denny.
Yes.
Councilor Wells.
Yes.
Councilor Chevlat.
No.
Councilor Rusomorov.
Yes.
Councilor Whitfield.
Yes.
Councilor Freeman.
Yes.
Councilor Giles, yes.
7-1.
All right.
Six.
And to new business in the agendas, we're going to, to discuss resolution number four. Because it's a resolution, we can vote on that tonight?
This is to override the mayor's veto.
All right, so, that's what I'm saying, so we can, we can override, that's what I'm saying, we can vote and override the veto tonight, you know, tonight.
Right.
That's what, so, so, um, so do you have, how we're going to do, roll call, or do you have cards?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay. So...
We need a motion and a second, then roll call.
Do we do need a motion still on, on, on that? Okay. Right, could you read resolution four by title? Do you have it here? I don't have it in front of me.
Resolution four, 2023, introduced by Councilors Giles and Chavis. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, concerning retention of both McKinnon and Evans LLP as legal counsel for the council's investigation into the 2022 city budget.
So, we approved that, and we approved resolution four, and it was vetoed. And so, um, oh, we're going to, I could entertain a motion to override the veto.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second, any discussion? Seeing none, call for roll to, roll call vote. I'll start with Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Denny.
Yes.
Councilor Wells.
Abstain.
Councilor Chevlat.
No.
Council Rusomorov.
Yes.
Council Whitfield.
Yes.
Council Freeman.
Yes.
Council Giles, yes. All right.
Six, 6-1-1 and one absent.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next in new business is, if you could read by title, resolution number seven. It's a vote for the mayor to veto on resolution seven, please read that by title.
Resolution number seven, 2023, introduced by Councilor Denny. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, approving the Cronin Associates contract for accounting services to review the city's 2022 financial records as part of the council's budget investigation.
All right. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve, or to override the mayor's veto.
Second? I say sheen.
Second.
Yeah. All right, any, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll entertain a roll call vote. And we will start with, I'll start my, we'll, we'll start, actually, we'll start with Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Council Denny.
Yes.
Council Wells.
Abstain.
Councilor Chevlat.
No.
Council Rusomorov.
Yes.
Council Whitfield.
Yes.
Council Freeman.
Yes.
Council Giles, yes.
6-1-1.
Mm-hmm.
Can you read proposal number five by title, please? Quick read by title.
Proposal number five, 2023, introduced by Councilor Whitfield. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, to adopt a new Title V, Article IV, Chapter I, regarding responsible bidding practices for bids to perform construction work on public works projects.
Yeah, that's what I was going back to code, yeah, that's what I'm doing. I like to assign this to code.
Proposal number six, 2023, introduced by Councilor Giles. A proposal for an ordinance adopting and enacting a 16th supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lawrence, Indiana.
I'm going to ask our attorney to discuss the importance of this, please.
So, this is the publication of the ordinances that have already been adopted in 2022 in our codebook. It's just putting them all together and adding them to our published books online and our paper books. So, I would ask if the council would please consider entertaining a motion to approve this proposal on first reading, which requires unanimous consent. Simply because it's nothing new, it's just publishing the 2022 ordinances in the codebook as we do at the beginning of every year. I would be to answer any questions.
I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the council rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second that. So, well, roll call vote, Councilor Chevlat?
I just do have, are you open for questions?
Oh, open question, I'm sorry.
Why didn't we do this in January, like we normally do?
Because I hadn't been paid for any work that I'd done through the end of 2022. And I didn't have a new contract approved in January.
Council Chevlat.
Yes.
Council Wells.
Yes.
Council Denny.
Yes.
Council Chavis.
Yes.
Council Giles, yes. Council Freeman.
Yes.
Council Whitfield.
Yes.
Council Rusomorov.
Yes.
Unanimous. Got something unanimous there. Right, yeah, to suspend it, now we get to adopt it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposal, what's the number, proposal?
Six.
Proposal number six.
Second.
Second, so, motion, Chavis, second, Rusomorov. Any discussion? We'll call, seeing none, we'll call for vote. Council Chevlat.
Yes.
Council Wells. Council Wells.
Yes.
Council Denny.
Yes.
Council Chavis.
Yes.
Council Giles, yes. Council Freeman.
Yes.
Council Whitfield.
Yes.
Council Rusomorov.
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number eight, 2023, introduced by Councilor Denny. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, to adopt a spending plan detailing the use of funding provided under the American Rescue Plan.
All right, let's get into it. Can I entertain a motion for approval?
Oh, it's approval, so moved.
So moved, can I get a second?
Second.
And so, it's been moved and seconded? Any discussion?
President, I just got a brief question. When I presented a proposal for this back in February, an email from you to me was that you weren't going to entertain any resolutions or any activity on this ARP funding until the investigation's complete, so what's changed?
So, we weren't, for me, I did tell you that, that I wasn't going to entertain that. A lot has changed from them, and I don't know, I'll let Councilor Denny kind of speak to you about the actual spending plan, did you read the, did you read it?
I did, but my question isn't for Denny, it's for you. You, you said you were not going to entertain any of these.
That was my, that was so...
I'm just wondering what changed.
It's my, my prerogative.
I understand that, that's, 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 okay.
I mean, you demand an answer. So, um, Councilor, Councilor Denny, could you please go into some of the things that we're doing with this, with this resolution, please?
So, with the, the American Rescue Plan, our understanding as a council is that it, we have to approve the expenditure on an annual basis. So, basically, what we're doing here is saying we're going to move all the money to 2024 and wait for a request for those expenditures at a later date once the investigation and other pieces are, are over. I was asked a question previously if this somehow impacts public safety, if the ARP funds are involved in public safety in some way. And until I received that question, I had, there is not a dollar that had ever been presented to this council that has to do with public safety money. You could take a look at the presentation by Tyler, the, what's written in the document. There is nothing there that says public safety is involved in the ARP funds. In fact, if you take a look at it, it talks about, I don't have it in front of me, but it was, give me one second. There was nothing there involving public safety. So, the, the question surprised me. And actually, that goes, I think, to where we're at, perhaps, with the council and the administration, where there are things being said that is not the understanding of this council, who has the authority to, to issue and to, to establish budget lines and budgetary authority. But as far as I know right now, there is nothing in the ARP funds dealing with public safety.
Thank you.
2023.
2023.
If we look, that, again... If we look, that, again, I think I see our FOP president here and a few others, the amounts that we talked about in 2024 are still in there, but all this does is shift the funds to 2020, from 2023 to 2024.
All right, any other further, any other discussion?
I really don't think that's clear at all.
Yeah.
So, I think for the record, needed, that needs to be like crystal clear. So I think council attorney may be pulling it up, but it, it needs to be crystal clear, and I don't think that that's clear at all.
Okay, we'll wait till.
It's not your fault, I just don't, I don't.
Maybe you should go to finance.
Uh huh.
Do we have the lines, the lines over there that weren't struck out?
So, is this the question about the five percent?
No, it's just what was.
Any perception, so I think, I think for me anyway, any perception that somehow public safety is negatively affected needs to be cleared up.
But there's no mention in none of the plans at all, so really, it was, I think it was just street talk, or I don't know, you know, rumors, hearsay, which is a lot of, lot of that. So we just wanted to, I know that we want to make sure, when I heard that today, I went back and looked at all the other ARP funds, ARP plans, just to make sure that I did not overlook that. But I guess, one good thing is, is when we get calls from higher ups, or statements from higher ups in public safety, we do take those seriously, and we investigate and make sure that we're not putting, you know, you guys in any sort of bad position at all, so just, I guess that's the good thing that comes out of this, is that you do know that we do take anything like that seriously, and, and get on the phone, and get, get an email, and make sure that we're in the right place with that.
Thank you, Counsel Giles.
Yeah. Any other further, any other further discussion about the plan? I think.
Mask question, President. Was this in the Finance Committee at any time?
This, um.
This request?
Right, no, I hadn't sent it to, I hadn't sent it to committee. What are you saying now?
So, this is just the plan. The plan requires a second step of an appropriation. So as we did, and it's the council's call, as we did last year, I think we amended it more than one time, and then they, the administration would have brought us the appropriation. At this point, if the council determines there's something that they want to use ARP funds for in 2023, you could easily amend the plan again, yet this year, and approve an appropriation to do it. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that.
Did you get opportunity to review the plan? Have you really got opportunity to review the plan?
Yes.
Um. Okay, I wanna make sure that everyone understands. We're clear? All right, are we ready to vote? All right, Counsel, we're gonna call with a roll call vote. Counselor Rusamorov.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Counsel Freeman.
Yes.
Counselor Giles, yes. Counselor Chavis.
Yes.
Counselor Denny.
Yes.
Counselor Wells.
Yes.
Counselor Chevlot.
No.
All right, I think that's the last.
Yep.
All right, next thing on the agenda is citizens' comments, all those wishing to address the common council, they fill out their name, you have five, you have five, you have five minutes, and the first name on the list is Ms. Pamela Anderson.
Thank you, Pamela Anderson, 6722 Silver Tree Drive. I first want to say thank you for the pause on the meeting and the prayer for Lauren, and I agree with you that this is what matters in these meetings, so I'd like to first address President Giles' comments regarding my comments during the public hearing. I find it to be selfish that you would use this platform for your personal opinion, only responding to my public comments, to ensure it on record. President Giles, we did speak on the phone for 30 minutes. I also received an email response from Sean Denny. However, I asked for clarity regarding the investigation and did not receive answers to this question from either of you.
Right.
As I spoke in public comments to amend ordinance number two, and as an example of the vote and veto vote, there is confusion and a lack of fiduciary knowledge by this council, there are typos. I urge our community to acknowledge this last, this, this lack of understanding and confusion by our current council members and mayoral candidates. We do not need more confusion, we need, we need more leadership. Regarding the Finance Committee, Resolution Number Five, authorizing the transfer of appropriations between major budget classifications, I would ask, how does moving all of the city's legal funds into supplies help move our city forward? This seems like it would open our city to significant legal liability. Regarding the amendment, our amended ordinance number two, it uses a deposition, which was read. The deposition in transcript is actually 189 pages, 3,000, I'm sorry, 34,135 words in length. The mayor has been clear in his messaging to communication regarding the investigation, and that he does not intend to move forward with that, and disagrees with it. Do not allow a one-sentence answer to be used out of context to state or allude to any support, for support of this formal request. Finally, you ask for transparency, you need to provide it, and you ask for a call to decorum, you need to provide it. Thank you.
All right, next on the, is the same list we had before, same people, all right, Heather Hewitt.
She left.
Okay, all right.
Sure you're the same list?
There's two different.
Yeah, some people probably, some people probably sign.
I thought I hit.
Yeah, we got it, thank you. But it's written the same line, right down the line, so, actually, but, you know, folks sign up, so, Mr., it's, I think it's Jim.
Hardy.
Hardy, yeah. He left. Mateo, Mateo Daniels.
I missed his name.
TVO.
I missed that, thanks.
Hello again, Mateo Daniel, 105 to H8 Segegrass. I just wanted to kind of reiterate, it, it's honestly kind of frustrating, because I understand where both sides are coming from, and the way I see it, and I'm not in your guys' position, I haven't, you know, seen all the documents and everything, but it, it seems like this whole thing could be solved with a single email, which is, you know, what happened with that budget after it was approved. It, it's not so much that we're lacking information on what the budget was, or what one person says, or what another person says, you know, just like many people have pointed out, we can go look at that. Lawrence does have pretty good transparency as about what's getting spent where, but the question is, you guys approved the budget, that budget didn't go through, why is that? Um, so, when you guys are doing this, I asked, it's like, hey, show us that email, who said that, who was responsible for that? Who sent it off? Why didn't it get put in? I don't want to do any more games, all right? And I think it's owed to the people of Lawrence to show that we're asking for transparency, and it's, it's less about, okay, well, we're trying to find fraud in this and that, is that we're running this, you know, rat game, when it could be solved with an email, a single email that shows when something was filed or not filed. But, you know, you guys have a job to do, I expect you guys to do that job, and we elected you, and I believe you can do that job, so that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you. Don't see her. Ms. Jennifer Torcy? Yeah. Mr. Ashcraft.
Good evening, my name is Tom Ashcraft, I live at 5880 Boy Scout Road, I've resided there for over 30 years plus. I have also worked for every single mayor the city's ever had, just for the record, I think that's pretty important. Mr. President, I don't understand, there wasn't a comment from the council tonight, that's a question, can I ask you a question?
Can he ask me a question?
Well, the bottom line is, we had an officer died, died in line of duty, Tom Chevlot was gonna identify, today is his anniversary, 15 years ago. And so today's the anniversary of this officer, we wanted a moment of silence for him.
That's fine, and, and just for, for the record, anytime that you want to have something like that, feel free to, to, you know, Tom, you have my number, feel free to give me a call, if there's anything to honor, anything that you guys want to do, something like that during the council meeting, please let, make me aware of those, of those things, and now that you're here, I'll be more than happy to make, to, actually, I insist that we, we do a moment of silence now, if that's, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Tell them the officer's name.
Craig Herbert.
Craig Herbert.
The other two officers, we have two other line of duty deaths, one's in northern Indiana, which is the Indiana State Trooper, and the other one's in southern Indiana, which is the Vandenberg County Sheriff Deputy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, we had contacted Tom Chevlot, the president, the FOP contacted him, Thompson, he took care of it.
The president of the council decides what the agenda is and what items are seen on the agenda, so I'm just saying, to ensure that we have no confusion, please reach out and, and, and just let me know.
Okay.
I'll make sure that, that nothing like that occurs again.
Okay, thank you. Well, I got, I'll start off by saying, I've been trying to follow this council, council, and all the changes and plans that you make a lot throughout the last two years, probably, but, you know, I just don't get it, so I'm, I'll say it like it is, Mayor Collier became mayor of this city, and he has improved the city by leaps and bounds, and I can speak that way, because I've been here, you know, I've seen the mayors come and go, you know, we have triple, we have an A-plus bond rating, we have Civic Plaza, we have culture trails, you know, we have the first police station in history, and furthermore, we're the first police department in the state of Indiana that had cameras, you know, this mayor has done a tremendous job in taking care of us. The city controller, you know, distinguished, distinguished budget presentation awards, that's awesome, you know, and then we, we come back around, you, there's, you're interested in putting more controls on, on the mayor's money, on the staffing money, and to regulate things of that nature, you know, if I was you, I would say, thank you, Mayor Collier, for making the city of Lawrence how it is today. This is a fine city, everything's happening, and never have I seen a council that become so negative and argumentative, you know, I just don't get it. The revised American Rescue Plan that you talked about earlier. They're not. In 2024, you put in there to put six more crime prevention officers on, well, why don't you put six more police officers in? Because the crime prevention officers ask Indianapolis, it doesn't work. You know, I'm sure if we asked the citizens more, put it out there more about what's going on, they'd be more alert to put things in, and the bottom line is, is this a political game? That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Next, resident, Mr. Shaler. Yeah, Mr. Jason Shaler? Okay. Meeting adjourned.